Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Marshman?
Here.
What?
Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Dell Spencer representing Temple Emmanuel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our God, God of our ancestors, may with mercy accept our prayer on behalf of our city and its government. Pour your blessings upon this land, upon its inhabitants, upon its leaders, judges, officers, and officials who faithfully devote themselves to the need of the public. Help them understand the rules of justice you have decreed, so that peace and security, happiness and freedom will never depart from our land. Adenai, God whose spirit is in all creatures, I pray that your spirit be awakened within all inhabitants of our city. Uproot from our hearts hatred and malice, jealousy and strife. Plant love and compassion, peace and friendship among the many peoples and faiths who dwell in our city. Grant us the knowledge to judge justly, the wisdom to act with compassion, and the understanding and courage to rid of poverty from our land. May it be your will that our city be a blessing to all who dwell on the earth and cause you all people to dwell in friendship and freedom. Speedily fulfill the vision of your prophets. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore, for all of them, from the least to them to the greatest, shall know me. Let us say amen.
Thank you, Dell. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Oh, thank you. Councilmember Marshan just got kicked under the table because I forgot to do this. But if you're here for Agenda Items, what are the eight and nine?
Nine and twelve.
And twelve. The three Agenda Items have been pulled from the agenda for right now, and so if you're here for that, we appreciate you being here. You're welcome to stick around. We'll move on to Agenda Item Three is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A, Material Claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of August 28, 2022 through September 9, 2022. B, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for July 2022 showing cash and investments as of July 31, 2022. C, Americans with Disability Act Grievance Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dr. Roger Bowe to continue serving on the ADA Grievance Committee. Dr. Bowe's term will begin September 16, 2022 and will expire September 16, 2024. D, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Beverly Dixon to continue serving on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Beverly's term will begin September 22, 2022 and will expire September 22, 2024. E, CDBG Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kylie Kirkpatrick to serve as a member of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Committee, replacing Shereen Ensworth, who resigned. Kylie's term will begin September 15, 2022 and will expire January 1, 2024. F, Council Decision Zoning Amendment for Approximately .41 Acres of Land at 1737 North Harrison. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request from Home Buyers 208 LLC to amend the zoning designation of approximately .41 acres of land located at 1737 North Harrison from Light Industrial LI to Residential Commercial Professional RCP. G, Council Decision Annexing Approximately 165 Acres of Land Located North of Highway 91, South of South Valley Road, East of Bannock Highway, and West of I-15. Council may wish to adopt this decision annexing Approximately 165 Acres of Land Located North of Highway 91, South of South Valley Road, East of Bannock Highway, and West of I-15. The subject property will be zoned Public Lands/Facilities (PLF) and Residential Medium-Density Single Family (RMS) with Concurrent Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Designation of Public (P) and Residential (R). H, Council Decision Ammon Park Subdivision Final Plat Approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat of Ammon Park Subdivision, which subdivides Approximately .81 Acres of Land into Nine Town Home Lots. The property is located, or the property is zoned Residential Medium-Density Single Family (RMS) and will be accessed from Ammon Streets.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Cheatham.
Before we move on this, I went through this stuff pretty carefully, and I have one question of staff that I believe would fall on Christine with her CDBG department.
Okay.
Christine, my question has to do with the Alliance Title and Escrow Payments on some titles, apparently property titles, money paid through HUD. It seems odd.
Sure. Thank you, Council President Cheatham. So our renewal program that's funded through the CDBG program offers loans to our low-to-moderate income residents to do home repairs and rehabilitation work. And in order to approve those loans, we require that where the city has a position on the property, so that if they were to default on the loan, we'd be able to retrieve that funding, say if they stop making payments, or if they were to sell the property or the property were to transfer hands. So we do pay Alliance Title when we finalize those title reports and our position on those loans.
Super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, council? Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of our Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda in its entirety.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshman?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Four is Proclamations. We have two proclamations tonight. The first proclamation will be Malnutrition Awareness Week. Councilmember Mansfield will read that. And the second will be Kind Community Week, and Councilmember Lurick will read that. Councilmember Mansfield.
Whereas, experts agree that nutritional status is a direct measure of health, and that good nutrition can keep people healthy and out of healthcare institutions. And whereas, inadequate or unbalanced nutrition, known as malnutrition, is prevalent in many groups, including vulnerable populations such as hospitalized patients and minority populations, with older adults having the highest rate of malnutrition compared to other groups. And whereas, illness, injury, and malnutrition can result in the loss of lean body mass, leading to complications that impact good health outcomes, including recovery from surgery, illness, or disease. And whereas, disease-related malnutrition is a highly prevalent form of malnutrition. And whereas, more than 2 million hospital stays involve malnutrition per year. Approximately 15,000 hospital patients with malnutrition go undiagnosed each day, and malnutrition patients have two times longer hospital stays compared to patients with no, a healthy nutritional status. And whereas, malnutrition leads to more complications, falls, and readmissions, and plays a role in cognitive deterioration and decreased functional capacity. And whereas, screening, assessment, diagnosis, and intervention are key to improving malnutrition in the United States. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, to hereby proclaim September 19 through 23, 2022 to be Malnutrition Awareness Week in Pocatello, and urge our citizens to become better educated about the negative impact of malnutrition on quality of life for all in our community.
Ernie, if you'd like to say something?
Yeah, I would. It's truly an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Senior Activity Center here in Pocatello, because this is our main mission, to provide food, good nutrition, and comfort to senior citizens. And one of the things I'd like to just point out is that if any of us live long enough, we may need the services that we're providing. So I really would encourage all of you and everyone here to think about that and try and find some way to support the Senior Activity Center, because this is our main mission. And I'll tell you, there are a lot of people there that are really enjoying this privilege, or this privilege, it's a need, and it makes a real difference in their lives. So anyway, thank you very much, Mayor Blad and council. Thank you.
Whereas, bullying, negativity, intolerance, and hate can happen to children and adults alike at any time, whether it's at school, work, online, or in the community. And whereas, these issues threaten the physical and emotional safety of the citizens in our cities and in our county. And whereas, various committees, groups, and individuals have come together to instead create positive empowering experiences for our youth and adults by teaching and promoting kindness as a way of life. And whereas kindness, the quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate, can go a long way toward making our schools, neighborhoods, communities, and our world better places. And whereas, we all have a choice every day to show kindness to others, both in our thoughts and our actions, to teach the value of being kind-hearted, to the role models of kindness, and to stand up and say kindness matters in Pocatello and Chubbuck. Now therefore, we, Kevin B. England, Mayor of the City of Chubbuck, and Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Saturday, excuse me, September 19 through 23, 2022, to be Kind Community Week in Chubbuck and Pocatello, and urge our citizens to be more than bystanders when it comes to kindness. Make the choice every day to be kind and integrate kindness into your daily lives.
I wasn't sure if you were going to leave me hanging or anything.
I want my whole group to come.
Come on up.
You've got to have us all.
I bet Ernie would take the picture for you.
This is a big deal, this kind of stuff.
Somebody's got to stand right here. Shower today, I promise.
All right, everybody smile, please. I think we got you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you. I would love to.
Thank you.
So Mayor Blad and council, City of Pocatello, I just want to say thank you. This is our eighth year. That's pretty exciting. And I want to say thank you sincerely, because after eight years, that you guys still recognize the importance of kindness within our schools, our businesses, and the community at large. I think more than ever, we need to continue the message of simplicity of the kindness. I need to say thank you to my board of directors. I have Sharice Brown and Shante Bloxon here. Shante will be taking the reins as president come October, so we're so excited for new leadership. I'd like to say thank you to our Brown ambassadors, Marty, Catherine, and Michael, because we couldn't do it without them, and our volunteers in the community. So thank you.
I might just add, in today's day and age, it couldn't be more important than to have a Kindness Week, and so thank you for carrying on that. That's a big deal. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 15, all city council meetings scheduled on this day have been canceled. October 6, 5:30 PM will be a city council clarification meeting. 6 PM will be a regular city council meeting. October 13, there'll be a city council work session has been canceled. Other events, October 1st, Oktoberfest at, that's so hard for me to do, Oktoberfest at Zoo Idaho from 4 PM to 7 PM. Zoo Idaho will be open on weekends only through October 30. As a reminder, there is an open burn ban in wildland interface area, wildland urban interface areas in Pocatello. That continues. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Six is the, is a Public Hearing. Proposed Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Amendments. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a proposed fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. There's so many different public hearings, this is ridiculous. I have a book full of things. All right.
Connie's kicking Scott's horse.
All right, Skok and Handle, my leg's been hurting for years. I bet somebody's sitting over there. I declare the public hearing open. There you are. I thought, I knew you were here, I just couldn't.
Well, I thought I got out of it.
You had some people over there going, "Over there, over there," though you couldn't get away from it.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council Meeting. Eugene Hill, City of Pocatello Finance Team. So the purpose of this, again, is the proposed fiscal year 22 September budget amendments. Every year, the city finds it necessary to amend the budget for unanticipated grants or situations, although the city may have been awarded the grant, the city council must still authorize new expenditures in the budget. These expenditures are as follows. First, the mayor's office, out of Fund 001, would like to take $1,000 and move it, or get approval, to use this to the mayor's youth advisory board. Number two is the police, out of Fund 001, take $1,000, which is, prove the revenue source is approved, is a grant for, or excuse me, a donation from ICCU, which would be used to improve the drones, or upgrade the drones. Number three is the fire from Fund 001, in the amount of $26,924. The revenue source was from the Idaho Department of Lands, which would be used to increase authority of reimbursement for direct costs due to the fire deployment. Number four is the library, Fund 007, in the amount of $2,272. Fund 007, they would like to have the authority to use these donations to purchase a 3D printer, and also make some changes to the reading room. Fund, excuse me, number five is the library Fund 007, in the amount of $47,324. The sources Fund 007 would like to use these funds that have been reserved to stucco repairs, which was approved in fiscal year 21 but was not able to be completed until fiscal year 22. Number six is the fire EMS, from Fund 035, $249,871. Revenue source is from the Idaho Department of Lands. Would like to increase the authority for the reimbursement of direct costs due to fire deployment of December 2021, January, and June 2022. Number seven is the WPC Debt Service Fund, $3 million from Fund 060, in the amount of And this would be coming from Fund 032 and 02038, which would basically pay down the bond, which is a call. It would, and the amount coming from Fund 170, or excuse me, coming from Fund 038 would be $2,609.170. And from Fund 032 would be $493,000. Excuse me, $493,000. And again, the reason to do that is because we cannot make as much money, you know, we just can't do it. And the cost not to service it is 5% versus what you can make in the market is like 2% or 3%. So it makes total sense to call the bond, pay it off, and be done with it. And I think that's the best thing for our suppliers or our... Moving on to the Street Fund, 070, $250,000. Again, Fund 070. This is where we had the opportunity, our budget set aside for fiscal year 24, where the state had approved additional monies for the project earlier. The city matched fund aid for the Hathorn and Quinn Street. And so those have been prepaid, and we just need the authority to do that. Finally, is the, with field costs going up, we would like to improve that by about $200,000 for a total of $3.9 million, call it, which would move our adopted budget from $64.9 million to $68.8 million. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Jean, thank you, Jean. Oh, before you leave, Jean, have we received any written correspondence in your office?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, have we received any?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. We will move to Agenda Item Seven is a Public Hearing Resolution Foregone Balance. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public regarding the proposal to reserve the foregone amount for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $847,772 for potential use in subsequent years as described in Idaho Code 63-802. Following the public hearing, council may wish to adopt a resolution to reserve the foregone amount of $847,772 for potential use in subsequent years in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We are here because property tax increases are kept, are capped by Idaho Code. The maximum increase, including new construction and any annexation, can only be 8%. There are a few exceptions under code, but that is the 8% cap. If a city does not levy the entire 8% allowed, then the amount of allowable tax not requested can go into the city's foregone balance. The foregone amount is not levied against citizens, but it is recognized and stored, in theory, by the state of Idaho, so that we can use it at some future point in time. The foregone amounts never expire, but they are restricted by the state of Idaho as to the amount and to the purpose that we can use those for. To reserve or recover foregone amounts, cities must adopt a resolution, which is why we are here tonight. The city has chosen not to use the entire levy amount that we are allowed to by law under Idaho Code for the fiscal year 2023 budget. We were allowed to request $32,836,035 in property tax, and the city has chosen to levy $32,213 and $263.
Thirty-two million.
Thirty-two million, 213, 263. I'm asking the council to approve a resolution reserving the $847,772. This would bring Pocatello's foregone balance to an estimated $4,928,187.
Council, any questions for Ann while she is up there? Ann, have we received any written correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, have we received any? It'd be in the same office, I wouldn't think so. Just dawned on me, it's the same office they're in. Thank you. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application.
I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage tonight, because normally I'm able to get answers to my questions before the hearing. This particular time, I emailed a question, I was told I needed to present that question tonight. The question I specifically have is, of the $847,772, what is the origin of that? I know that foregone comes from the 3% base increase, new construction, annexation, or terminating UR growth, which we didn't have any of that. I went back and reviewed the July 21 meeting, which was the final meeting before the budget went to publishing. And at that meeting, the only changes made to the document that had been prepared at that point for the budget was an additional $10,000 was added in for parks, and there was some additional, I don't have the exact figure, added in from Power County for revenue. And the time that the council approved that, the council had been told that the maximum new property tax available was $899,808. And it was the council's intention to use all of that, to use the 3%, to use the new construction, and to use annexation. That was the decision, was to use all that, you weren't using any foregone. So I'm a little perplexed as to how there can even be a foregone resolution this year, when that was the direction given at the time of publishing. If I'm misunderstanding something, hopefully somebody can help me understand that. The other thing is, when I went and actually compared the two appropriations ordinances between FY '22 and FY '23, and give me a minute here, because I've got so many documents in here, the difference between those two appropriations was only $482,589. That was not the direction given on July 21, based on the document that was prepared that date. I realize that possibly new construction estimates came in higher than what was originally, because you don't always have those numbers in advance, so that might have affected some of it. But I'm just, I'm really confused on why there's a $417,219 difference in that foregone, because when you add together the foregone balance to what was actually raised, that comes to $1,333, I'm sorry, $1,330,361, which is a pretty big difference from $899,808. So I'm hoping I can get some good information on where that actual figure came from, what its actual origin is, broken down. But until I have the information at this point, I'm opposed to the foregone resolution. And I'm also concerned, because I, everything I've been told from the state is foregone's going away. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, Jean, would you come up here and?
Happy to.
So Jean, thank you for being here. The question is, is where, where do we get the foregone?
So, if I may, Mayor, basically the 1.3 million that you're talking about, the city is elected to use the new construction, which is $360,000 approximately, the annex, and then if we do the repayment, and then also the maximum we're talking about from the levy is $955,000 that we could use. Of that, we have elected only to use approximately 5%, or excuse me, a half a percent, which is $156,000. So if you back that out, it totals, comes down to where the majority of the foregone is coming from the excess of the maximum that we could use, in the amount of the $847,000.
Okay, so if I understand what you're telling me is, we anticipated, or we put in the budget that we would possibly up to the full 3%, use that full 3%, but after all evaluations, new construction, and everything was added in, the council has actually only asked to take a half a percent of that?
Correct, approximately a half a percent, yes.
Approximately half a percent of what? In fact, when we say approximately, some might think it's above it, it's actually below that half a percent.
Below that, like, yeah, like .49%.
Yeah, just a teeny bit below that half a percent. So, so really, we, that foregone is 2.5%.
Correct.
Is what that foregone, so that's where that balance is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Council, well, Jean has already left, so if you had any other questions? Apparently it's too late. I'm just kidding, did you have any other questions? I'm sorry, that's my fault. Any other questions for Jean? Okay, thank you, Jean.
I'll think of one when he sits down.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think one comment that Heather made needs to be clarified. To make the foregone go away would take legislative action. There's no office at the state that could do that without the legislature agreeing to that. That's been proposed the last two years and has been soundly defeated both times. So whether or not it will go away is still a question to be decided in January.
Well, and the discussions also... Well, and the discussions also, and it might help Heather also understand it, the discussions have been, not that they remove it completely, but that you're, you are not able to continue to save it, but you, what is, what you have there is still available.
And that all depends on how a bill would be written.
How it's written, so anything can go away.
Yeah.
And anything could be added if we...
Oh, boy.
Just up to the legislature. So, okay, thank you. Then with that, counsel, I declare the public hearing closed. This item is before you had any wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Member Mansfield?
I would move that we approve Agenda Item Number 7, the resolution reserving the forgone in the amount of $847,772 for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. As a reminder, Agenda Item 8 and 9 were both pulled, so Agenda Item 10, final plat application, Western Skies Division 3 subdivision. Council may wish to consider a final plat application submitted by Land Quest Development Incorporated, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide 24.55 acres, more or less, into 55 lots. The proposed subdivision is generally located west of I-15, south of I-86, and north of East Point Drive. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code with conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Counsel Member Mansfield?
I would move that we approve final plat application as outlined in Agenda Item 10 for, with all applicable conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lyric. Everybody's holding on to the things there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we vote, I'd like to compliment, I guess it's Carl and Merrill, for all of the notes that are in the memorandum on here, you know, I looked at 8, 9, and all of these and thought, wow, what a great job of analyzing and putting in place all the things that we require that are apparently missed by those who submitted this, so nice job.
Good work. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Application. Council may wish to approve a U.S. Department of Transportation grant application for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A FY '22 Action Grant Plan, Program in the amount of $225,900. The grant application requires a local match of $62,120, which will be provided through in-kind services. Funds will be used to develop a community-wide action plan to support planning infrastructure and operational incentives to element, to element roadway facilities and to eliminate roadway fatalities, not facilities, and improve bicycle and pedestrian mobility.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, before we vote on this, to ask why we're doing this. We're doing a planning grant to assess safety in an area that's never had a fatality, at least not, not that anyone can ever remember. I wonder why we're, why we're going this far.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Christine Howe, CDPG Program Coordinator. So this grant is being administered through the U.S. Department of Transportation through the bipartisan infrastructure law, BIL, the bill that was passed. At the federal level, they authorized $5 billion in discretionary funds for this Safe Streets and Roads for All program, and that includes both of these action plan grants as well as capital grants. So in order to be eligible for the capital project grants, you do have to have an action plan completed that meets their program requirements. The city at this time does not have an action plan that would meet those requirements. So in order to open up capital funding for future program years, we would need to go through the action plan process. So what this grant would do is, would allow us to conduct traffic studies in, throughout the city, identify the major roadway areas that we would want to, you know, improve in terms of traffic safety, bicycle pedestrian safety, address any potential fatalities. And then, once that plan is in place, we can apply for the capital funding to complete those projects. There are a number of areas in town that we know of already that would need street and road improvement, and the historic downtown plan was just completed as well that called for a number of traffic changes, roadway changes. So this would allow us to access some capital funding once the action plan is in place.
Yeah, follow up and then Josh.
When I read this, I was under the impression this only applied to the historic downtown area. Is that an error?
No, it, it is for the entire city. So the attachment for the jurisdiction, we included the entire city so that we could expand and conduct the studies throughout. We would, since we have the downtown plan in place, obviously look there as well, but these projects would be prioritized as a result of the action plan, and then we would determine which intersections to apply for the capital funding. And since it's a several-year program, I think it's a five-year program, there's an opportunity to do multiple years and address multiple intersections with the capital funding.
Thank you. Josh?
What's the, you may have answered that, but let me just clarify, what's the timeline on receiving capital improvement funds? And so how quick do we have to have this action plan done in order to get that monies?
Sure, the action plan needs to be completed within one year from award, and then the capital improvement plan grants, I believe, are multiple years, either three or four. So we would have time if we were awarded for the capital to do that construction project. But this would just be a year-long kind of period of performance.
Okay. Counselwoman Lyric?
I don't have a question, I was prepared to make a motion.
Okay, any other questions before Christine walks away? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I move that we approve the U.S. Department of Transportation grant application for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Fiscal Year 2022 Action Grant Program in the amount of $225,900, $225,900, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 11.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, well, if, if I might propose whether an amendment in order to include the approval of that grant if awarded?
Yeah, I think...
The acceptance?
Or the acceptance, yes, the acceptance.
I would add that, that we would accept this grant, we approve accepting the grant if it's awarded. Yes, thank you, forgot about that.
Yes.
Are you, is yes the second to that? Sorry. So we have a motion by Lyric and a second by Chita. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12 has been pulled from the agenda, and so we'll move to Agenda Item 13, An Ordinance Approving an Amendment to Fiscal Year 2022 Appropriations Ordinance, Increasing the Total Fiscal Year Expenditures by $3,881,268 to account for additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city, and to use previously unappropriated, unappropriated cash balance for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Counsel, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Counsel President Chita?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 13, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and the entire ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Chita and a second by Mansfield. Connie, or Connie, not Connie, Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Chita?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An Ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a Municipal Corporation of Idaho, Amending Ordinance Number 3076, Ordinance Number 3086, and Ordinance Number 3099, the appropriation ordinance and amendments to the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022, providing for an increase in expenditures in the following funds: General Fund, Street Fund, Library Fund, Sanitation Fund, Ambulance Fund, WPC Debt Service Fund, Street Federal Aid Fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $3,881,268, providing that the revenue to pay for setting increases shall be derived from grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of the appropriation ordinance Number 3076, ordinance Number 3086, and ordinance Number 3099 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Chita?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a three-minute timer per speaker and 15 minutes total for this agenda item. Heather Diselcon?
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me time to speak to you tonight. I hope that you will agree that good communication is important and good information is important. That's one of the things that Lydia and I have attempted to do with our group is to try to inform citizens. There's a lot of misconceptions out there, and it's a huge job, as you know, I'm sure you run into citizens all the time who say some things are pretty, pretty off the wall. But the reason I'm here tonight is because for the past three weeks, Lydia and I have been attempting to get ahold of an itemized FY '23 budget, both expenditures and revenues, and I'm happy to say Lydia was able to pick that up today. But one of the documents that we originally provided, there was a column on here that just, based on our understanding of it, and we have spent hundreds of hours poring over various budgets, not just the City of Pocatello, we look at other budgets as well. So we're pretty versed on how to read budgets, but I wanted to share this with you. I'm sorry I didn't make enough copies, so maybe you can share. This was a specific document provided to us last week, and I would like to draw your attention to the fifth column on the right, and you'll see that, and this is normal, you have your actuals for previous years, and then you have your, sometimes you don't have actuals, you know, that year hasn't been closed out, you'll have adjusted budgets. But if you look at that fifth column over there, that's FY '23 adjusted budget. And next to it is the fourth column, the FY '23 expended budget requested is what I assume that that means. The column, the fourth column matches exactly what was posted in the notice of budget hearing, and it also matches what is in the appropriations ordinance. What is confusing to us is why there is an FY '23 adjusted budget. We haven't even started FY '23, it starts October the 1st. And what concerns us even more is that the totals, if you look on the sixth page, shows a $15 million reduction. The general fund alone shows a $3.2 million reduction, and the, if you add in the additional funds that make up the levy, it's another $2.3 million reduction for, 5.5 million reduction. So I'm hoping that there's been some sort of miscommunication here, because I can't imagine that before we've even started the FY '23 year that we're already looking at reducing expenditures, even though kind of oddly and strangely, you know, we're here for fiscal responsibility, that would be the direction we probably prefer things to go, but not to this extent. So I know that you can't necessarily respond tonight, but I hope that somebody, either from the city or from the council, will reach out to us and help us to understand what we're looking at here because this has us very concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heather was the only one that had signed up, so thank you very much, counsel, for being here tonight, and with that, we are adjourned.